And I will call the order, the equal quote 2021 meeting of the council of the town of Washington, Virginia. And we have an agenda in front of us. And are there any additions or changes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I do.
Joe, thank you. A second?
Second.
Second command, a rule call, Patrick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The agenda is as printed. We have minutes from the March 8, 2021 Town Council meeting in front of us. Are there any questions or changes from council members? If not, hearing any, I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 8, 2021 council meeting.
I make the motion, Mr. Bennett.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from Mary Ann, second from Joe, rule call vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes? Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, mayor's report. I will be brief. Ladies and gentlemen, there is something happening out on the water avenue like a plane. It is, you cannot believe the pleasure that I feel in seeing there actually being a lot of stuff going on up there. The town which sold the property really doesn't have, is not in charge of the building and construction process, is just trying to support, facilitate for, on behalf of the citizens, to get this thing done. And it's very exciting to see, I see that about two-thirds of the trusses are up now. You'll notice that they're nice steep roof. And we have had a number of people who have participated, I think we're in the high sixties, the number of people who have participated in our fundraising effort to try and get some funds so that we have a building that is attractive and meets the surrounding beauty of the community. So we're excited for that. You may not have noticed that the bricks have already been delivered and they have already poured the curves. So as of, you know, I look out my window and feel like I should be chasing after sacrificial lambs to try to make sure that we have dry weather. We are still at the mercy of the weather, so that it continues to delay us. My last conversation with the builder, which was in the middle of last week, is that he is still anticipating that he will be finished in about three weeks, four weeks at the outside, that the contractor who's going to do the internal work for the building will come in thereafter, and they are still anticipating a June 1 opening. Now, I have the known now to be someone who gives dates that are blown through by time and all sorts of other factors. And so the caveat I put tonight is that the weather is still in control of everything. So if we have dry weather from here on out for the next two months, chances that we will, the good chance is that we will meet that schedule. If we start getting a lot of downpours, that schedule will be delayed again. So that is where we are with that. That's the main thing I wanted to have in the mayor's report for tonight. Gail Swift is our treasurer, has gone abroad, and we wish her, got speed on her trip this week. I hope she has an enjoyable time. And I have been asked to give the treasurer's report, and ladies and gentlemen, I assure you, I am a four-second to our treasurer in terms of the presentation of our treasurer's report. You have the treasurer's report in front of you. It's showing account balances totaling $658,234.75, which is, the income is greater than anticipated and expenditure is, according to what I see, and doing quick math, slightly below what's anticipated, but I suspect that the bills are probably a month or two behind them. So it looks like we may be on schedule in terms of year-to-date first budget. There is a list of bills to be paid that have been listed, some showing the stipends that members of the town council receive for their spending or participating in meetings. We will not make the town go broke from what we see. There are a couple of larger costs, Butler Septic bill, which is under the wastewater, Butler and Iker Septic, and that one is especially high because there were six loads of slug removed versus the usual two-four loads. The ESS environmental systems service bill is high because of unexpected repair and maintenance charges. And then you have the Virginia Resource Authority is the sewer loan payment, and that's our annual payment for the semi-annual.
Semi-annual.
Semi-annual payment to them. So that is the treasurer's report that I am presenting. Are there any questions? I hope not. Are there any questions from council members?
I have one. The one we were just looking at is from February 28, and then there's another one from March 31.
Thank you. I think that was because the February one was pulled off and we decided not to vote on that one.
Right.
And so that's, thank you, Mary Ann, for bringing that up.
The February income is so high, seven to eight thousands and something, and typically it's not that high. Then you look at the margin income, it's, the general income's 29. I just want to, I'm sorry, Gail's not here, please.
Is that just when payments come in from revenue?
So if February, if February is unusually high and a couple of means that a payment went into the vein or was received at the next month versus the last day of the month, so even if it's just a day late, it can grow off another month.
Okay, so when it came in and when it was the positive?
Correct.
It's still a lot.
Any other questions? Can I have, I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report. I have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brad. Rule call? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Treasurer report is approved for March, April, and the bills to be paid. Planning Commission, is there a report from the Planning Commission?
Thank you. I'm the vice president of the planning commission. We met, had a large discussion about the protocols that you had proposed at the earlier meeting, and had a number of questions to me. You didn't really understand how if it was one representative from each of the affected boards, how A, that didn't constitute a notice issue, and if somebody's coming in to talk about the permit saying that, that seemed unreasonable. And really proposed that we should prepare, the town should prepare a list of everything you need to do and who you should be informing if you wish to build or renovate a property, rather than have yet another meeting.
Yeah. I'm working on putting together something like that right now, it's pretty comprehensive. I hope to have something by next meeting.
And at our next meeting, we will first take our first look at, well, we're going to review the operating of the plant in January with a high for the future.
Great. Yeah, it's hard to believe it's getting to be that time.
I'm sure.
It's hard to believe it's getting to be that time for the five-year review. Good. And your next meeting is, do you know all hands?
It's the fourth Monday of the month.
Anybody have a, well, it's fourth Monday?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. Yes. All right. Are you all preparing minutes for your meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
They are, they have not been approved yet, so they're currently in the draft stage. So when they get approved, it's the next meeting, then nothing in your next pocket.
Great. Architectural review.
We have a meeting today after tomorrow, and we've got three applications that we're going to approve.
Okay, all right. In both meetings, the planning mission and ARB meet at 7:00. All right, thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Loving your show, Eric.
All right. We have nothing under old business. I want to go through just a couple of reminders about the process that we use for government's meetings in the Commonwealth, is the town will be going through the new business, and we'll be having a discussion among town council members. At the end of those four points of discussion, we will then open it up to the public, for the public to give their comments on any of those four points that come up, or on any other matter that wishes to come forward. I am sure that some of these issues will be coming up in future meetings, and the public will have a chance to weigh in in any decision-making process that happens at this time. So having said that, is a public hearing for the FEMA floodplain ordinance? This is an exception that, this is, Mr. Bennett, is time where any public comment can happen on the floodplain?
Public hearings.
All right, public hearing specifically on the FEMA floodplain ordinance. So I will open it up.
And before we do that, Mr. Mayor, might Mr. Bennett give a brief, if possible, code hears, just enjoy, during this, and what changes, so that people are aware.
This will be very brief. The reason this ordinance is before council is that I was informed by the state agency that interacts with FEMA, that unless the town adopted this ordinance in this form, there would be certain things that would be excluded from, even though the town has, under the new map, has no floodplain within the town limits. And if the things that the town would not be eligible to receive, the most important, I thought, were disaster relief funds, if there was something really out of the ordinary, if the town didn't have the sort of ordinance adopted in place, the town would be excluded from those disaster funds.
That's also not for, for a state community that does have a trust plan and such. So if you didn't have this ordinance in place, would that impact their ability to get flood insurance, or not?
Yeah, she, she named off a whole list of things, and I believe that was one of them, that if someone wanted to acquire to get floodplain insurance without this ordinance in place, they couldn't get the flood insurance that's federally, essentially federally backed in time.
But you understand, I'm sure, that this is before us to vote, to approve a floodplain ordinance when we don't have a floodplain?
Correct.
It's brutal.
That's what I thought at first. I, that's what I thought at first, I just said, why is that for anything if we don't have any floodplain in the town? And then after some time and a five, I received a call from Richmond that was pretty pointed, that the town needed to adopt something if they wanted to keep all these other options open. And it's not.
Do we have that in writing, or anything?
No.
I think this is very peculiar. I'm having a hard time accepting this, I guess.
Is there any drawback to this?
It looks to me, you know, if there were actually floodplain within the town, it provides for a lot of protections for property owners, that this means they have a review and exceptions and things like that for individual properties. So to me, it seems if there were floodplain within the town, that it's actually prepared for property owners.
So it doesn't mean t the town anywhere, but it's just, it's just an ordinance that's sort of being thrust upon us. We'd be in compliance with Richmond, with Washington, and we do it.
When I said to take, look at it, she said to take the business because you have to adopt it in this form.
Really?
Yes.
And who was this, I mean, what agency?
It's the Director of Natural Resources, it's an agency.
Any other questions from members of the public or other members of the town council? We'll go ahead and open up the public forum. Pardon?
Is there a cause?
There is no cause. Yes, ma'am.
It just can be reasonable to adopt it, given what Mr. Bennett has said, and I know reading through it, that should we adjust any boundaries, there's a provision for that, which I find.
Thank you. I should note for the record, the first speaker from the public was Nancy Bunkin, who's a resident of the town. The second speaker was Judy DeSarno, who is also a resident of the town.
And I'll mention, we also did adopt it at a county level, Mary Ann. We did, we did the same exercise at a county level. So without any more details of Mr. Bennett's conversations with the state, I assume that to the extent that the town is embedded within the county, that it sort of completes the ordinance picture, I would guess. Because anytime, anytime ordinances like this, including things related to CARES Act or otherwise, you have the town, the county are addressed separately. But, you know, as, as to how it pertains to the town, blacking any kind of floodplain, it's up to you all to decide whether it's necessary, but we did adopt it probably four or five months ago.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a benign, it's a benign.
Thanks for explaining it.
And that last speaker was Kier Whitson, who is a resident of the county. And I should have said this before, when you speak, please state your name and where you were a resident, whether you were a resident of the town or the county or elsewhere. Sure.
I'm a proffer. I'm a private resident of the town, take care of the two buildings, the houses that reside there, so I'm here to put one that down. I was just thinking about, you were saying about floodplain, Richmond is in a lower area than we are here in the mountains. So the whole terrain is different there than it is here, so why try to impose something that would be happening to them on people that are not in areas like that? I didn't really understand what Mr. Kurt was saying, what he's facing away from, so I didn't hear his explanation.
I think, in answer to your question, from what I gather, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Bennett and from Mr. Whitson, is this is kind of a pro forma thing, that is a, it's like shaking off the box, that Richmond wants every municipality and within the, or jurisdiction within the Commonwealth of Virginia to approve. So that's how I'm taking it. Is that wrong, Mr. Bennett?
No. And I point out that if this ever became a factor, if the map were redrawn and there was actually floodplain, should then, should then the town, Article 5, variance is factored to be considered, it's actually, there's a lot of exceptions that would allow destruction, even in the floodplain, if that were the wish of the town.
So, and also, it says in the preamble, we have a floodplain ordinance now, so this is to repeal the current one and to amend it with or to adopt, and it's placed as new floodplain ordinance. All right. Any other questions from the public? There being none, I will close the public hearing on the FEMA floodplain ordinance. And can I have a motion from a member of the council to approve this ordinance?
I have something.
Thank you, Jean. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brad. A rule call, vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Reluctantly, yes.
I'll put it so through. I'll put it back through.
All right. Moving on, because we've got a lot of stuff going on tonight. We have a public hearing for water and sewer ring review. We have before you a notice that has been advertised in the paper, and is now here for consideration, and I welcome, I open up the public hearing on the water and sewer ring review.
Mayor, if I might, I have a few opening remarks about this. I think we talked about rather exhaustively last time about the town's finances, and I handed around, as we began, a copy of the last exhibit, from the last four audit of the town's finances, and on the operating income loss line in the middle area, you'll see four straight years of double, triple-digit losses for both the plants. If you add it out, the water system has lost about $87,203.50 each year, the wastewater You know, we've been lucky in that we tend to run a pretty top ship on the town side and had a fair amount of money to be able to transfer in from the general fund, but we've also been slowly bleeding our capital to do that, our capital reserves to do that. 2020 showed us that doing that is probably not a very good, sustainable idea, we're already getting into questionable territory with the amount of reserves we had. We were able to defer our loan payments this year, which allowed us to sort of keep in the blast, but I think we'll finish the year with less than, I think about a quarter's worth of revenue in the reserve fund, and we add some other significant, as we've discussed, capital expenses coming down the road. So the proposal would raise about $43,576 worth of revenue, that's probably not going to completely cover what we need to, probably another $10,000 to $20,000 to go, but we'd like to sort of take this pause there, see how the books end up this year, see whether or not we have any other income from additional sewer tax, et cetera, this year that may facilitate keeping rates as they are going forward. That works out to, the rates work out to a $9.50 raise in June for most users, and then another $7.50 in September, for a total of $17 total for sewer water for most resident users. For commercial users, that will, of course, play out into a higher bill over a year, but that's the long and short of it. As the town finishes paying off a couple of loans on the water and sewer plants, certainly we will be in a far better, fickle position to make, make this more comfortable. What I would ask is if we adopt this ordinance today, do we require in that ordinance an annual review of rates, so that we can adjust them either up or down, as needed on an annual basis, and require the, the council to look at this rate annually, which had not done, but had been done historically, that's why we find ourselves in such an adverse position financially.
Thank you. One question, Mr. Bennett, is it an ordinance that we're adopting, or is it just a rate change?
There was an ordinance adopted that gave the town the authority to adopt rate changes by resolution, not an ordinance.
So it's a resolution?
However, if you want to be perfectly safe, make it an ordinance.
And, and the ordinance would be to adopt the rates so stated, and then that the town of Washington council would review the rates every year, their first meeting in January, their meeting in January, that's when we'll start the conversation about the budgets.
Who's advertising that we are adopting an ordinance or leaving?
And, and I have, John, I have, back in 2015, we had an ordinance to.
Right.
Regarding this, for both the water and the sewer.
There's one where it's the key, the authority that's up.
I think it says that rate, if I remember correctly. I think it was two percent.
Brad had a comment. I think it's worth pointing out that one entity in the town is paying more than half of the revenue for sewer water, and that is around $8,900 per month. And it seems rather targeted at commercial users, particularly the biggest commercial user, which to date has paid the town more than, well more than $6 million, $6 million, including food and lodging taxes. And in spite of COVID, in spite of being closed for two months, we've paid the town 14% more this year than we did last year. So the in taxes increased, which, which we provided the town, more than 35% since 2015. And the combined sewer and water with meals and lodging is $440,000 per year. One might ask, why is this town broke? Why is it struggling? Where's the money going? And is this the only way to raise funds? More hookups are being, coming on, more users are in waiting in the wings. It's a very difficult town to run business in, or to attract a business to come here. Most people find it overly restrictive and highly taxed for a town this size. So I think some consideration should be given to commercial users. And I think the facts need to come out here of how much money we are fortunate enough to be providing this tiny tentile. And may I also say, it is not easily earned. I had worked seven days a week for the last year and gone nowhere, worked harder than I have ever worked in my entire life, as my whole staff has, to keep our business open, to keep our guests happy, and to keep enticing them to come and discover Washington, Virginia. So we're not asking for special treatment, we're simply asking for the consideration of, then is enough enough from one entity? So historically... So, historically, when the food and lodging tax was instituted, we had a wild and crazy lawyer in Stanisville, he's dead now, so I can talk about it. And he said, "Well, this is the simplest thing that they've ever tried to pull on you that can be fought, and I'd love to fight it because it's totally and completely illegal to tax one entity when you have the only food and lodging establishment in the town." But my advice is pay it. Because they'll have to be intelligent enough to realize that they're entering into a partnership with you at that point. You have created a partnership with the town of Washington. What benefits the inn benefits the town. Hopefully, the next time you try to do something, they won't block you or impede your progress. They will realize that what helps the inn helps the town. What makes money for the inn makes money for the town. Unfortunately, he was wrong. But we've come a long way and we're very grateful for the support that we do have as an entity. But I think few people realize the facts, few people realize the dollars. Few people realize what it takes to produce those dollars. Few people realize the expenses required to produce those dollars. The continual renovations, the five gardeners, the three horticulturists, the public relations agencies in New York to generate stories about this beautiful town and this destination. The continual fixing up of one building after another building and buying them at a premium, working against ourselves because we created a cachet around this community. We're very happy here. But it's curious that other towns through the years continually contact us and say, "Is there any way you might consider opening a branch in our town?" We would waive all restrictions, all taxes. We would give you a stipend to entice you to come here. Watching what this entity has done over forty-three years to benefit the town of Washington, Virginia. So, I suggest that we look hard at the number that we're penalizing the primary user of the sewer and water and take into consideration what that user is providing in other benefits to the community. Also realizing that perhaps other businesses might wish to come here someday, but they will find it onerous if they are taxed differently than the homeowner. If they're taxed more for using more water and more sewer. In most municipalities, it goes down. But we appreciate any consideration you may wish to provide. Thank you.
I, uh, I didn't get elected into office to re-rate the tax, I can promise you that. What I was confronted with, and I remember very sitting here with Laura Dodd and some of you the first time I had to do a budget meeting in twenty twenty, and we got through the town general fund, and I thought, well, all right, you know, equally asked, where must the money go? And Laura said, "Just wait, switch over to the water and sewer plant." And sure enough, there is a structural deficit in there, and our predecessors in these chairs took on an enormous amount of debt to create those systems. I can't correct the why we didn't try to fix this in a better way forward. I'm just proposing a set of rates that may perhaps begin to plug that one, uh, going forward from here. And I hope that it will get easier. I just don't, I welcome the inputs of other members of the, of the council. But books just do not balance. And it's not that we're extravagant spenders on the general fund side. I mean, there, there, I literally was chasing down, and I got laughed at at one of these meetings because I was chasing down the amount of postage weight spent, and sent out a lot of it. But, and I agree, there's still that initial budget that was back to the tune of a couple thousand dollars here or maybe there. It's not substantial enough to fix the problem. Now, the rates that do go up are slightly lower for the corporate customers. They could possibly be a little bit lower than that. I can go back and run the numbers again, but right now, as it stands, most customers in the town will see a twenty-five percent increase in their water bills. Large users will see a twenty-three point five percent increase in their bills over the year. And again, that's why I stipulated that we've got to review this annually, not because I'm interested in rate hikes, but I'd like to see us break even and then pay a break down. We're very near paying off, and if we get some additional COVID relief funds, we may well be able to pay off one of the bonds of the plant. But I don't know how, how the books.
Brad, do you want?
Without getting us down to zero, and knowing that we have these large capital outlays still in the future for replacing an aging system. I mean, it is a bad situation, and I don't, I struggle with how to, how to fix. And it boggles my mind somewhat that it has been allowed to persist for as long as it has.
The plan is simply to take on more users.
I understand that.
But there seems to be a mixed messaging regarding that. Do we or do we not welcome growth for the sewer and water system?
I absolutely do, and there is room for it to expand, and I see absolutely no reason why we should limit that expansion later for the foreseeable future.
I think the town council, the town council has already shown that through the comprehensive plan that, that specifically talks about growth to help offset the deficit in the sewer and water rates.
And if the current plan development goes through, a year from now, this could be a very big conversation. But we actually don't have enough money in the budget to do it a year from now without getting very near zero in any of this group at all. As, as the votes currently stand, unfortunately.
Brad, do you want to speak to the question about the costs?
Um, unfortunately, costs are, are what they are. I don't know about a lot of your case.
Can you talk long, please? Can you pull your microphone up close?
It, it takes so many man hours a day to run the plant, it takes so many kilowatt hours, and there are things that are very difficult to control. Now, as Joe was saying, yes, there are opportunities to add users. There are infill lots, there's, you know, handful of different things. But remember, we're talking about phase one of the sewer district. Okay? Now, there's one particular scenario that's being devaluated right now to add a user that could be, you know, ultimately several users, and that would generate revenue. But I don't know how, how soon that's going to occur. It's not going to occur in six months, not lately. So, we, we have a toll that we've got to somehow bridge. I'm looking at some very out of the box ideas to reduce one aspect of expenses of the sewage plant, and at the same time, in a simultaneous move, possibly create a new revenue chain so we can bring money in. It's not going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars or anything like that, but it will be money that is not currently coming in to the town that would be directed to the treatment plant, offset expenditures. So, you know, we're looking at things, um, but it's not an overnight fix. And if we say we need X dollars to be able to bridge middle yard, Joe's work is, I'm sure, well into the night and has come up with it. And if we say, well, all right, then commercial enterprises get less of an increase. So, now there's a, there's a differential. But where does that differential go in order to still keep us at the number that we need to be at in order to keep going forward? Say nothing of again, some of the recurring or expenses that are going to occur on this plant. It was not well designed in the very beginning, and I'm doing my best to figure out alternatives when repairs are necessary. You know, I haven't done one that, you know, is going to, hopefully it will save about five or six thousand dollars in the end. But those are like, you know, points in time. You don't really help bridge that recurring debt service and things like that. So, it's, it's a little difficult to swallow, but I think through some of the work I'm doing, some of the work that Joe's doing, the, um, I had a meeting on Friday to talk about the operating contract, and right now, we have so many hours in the contract. But then we have extra hours for unexpected occurrences, or, um, where they just need additional hours. Those additional hours are charged to us at a higher rate. So, Cody and I are going to look at those and see, if we put those into the contract, give them additional hours, they'll come in at a lower rate. The overall contract will be slightly larger, but the end result of contract plus unexpected expenditures will be lower. So, we can trim a few dollars here and there.
In other words, we're doing a lot that we can to try to stay.
We're doing everything we can, and I think what's important that Joe said, um, because I remember, you know, the meeting, the last meeting we had, and before that, you know, there's concern about rates go up, rates go up, but there's no saying. We review it every year, and once some of these loans can be retired, then overall expenditures come down, and we can roll those rates back. So, it may be a little painful now, but we have a chance to, you know, recover from that later. And the other thing that is sort of looms out there that we don't really want to talk about is should we default on a mortgage payment or some thing, or get close to that? It starts putting us into some legal jeopardy.
Well, there's a, there's a very clear legal jeopardy, which is if the town defaults on its loans, we are forced to impose a property tax on all citizens of the town to meet the obligations of the loans.
So, it's-
We end up paying one way or another.
Where is that coming from, Joe?
It's in the loan documents that we sign or the town signs. There is a, there is a particular stipulation in the loan document that to meet our good faith agreement, the town may impose a property tax to pay back those loans.
Essentially, the bond holder can step in and do whatever is necessary to-
They will squeeze us until they get their money. That's the bottom line.
So, can we look at all avenues of revenue coming into the town that we could use for this?
I could set up a toll box out of the-
Pardon?
We could set up a toll box out of the level.
No, let me ask you this.
I'm teasing.
What if the meals and lodging tax revenue, what if the meals and lodging tax was raised and we got more revenue? Can that revenue be used to pay for this?
Any source of revenue could be used. We chose the wastewater and water bills as being more appropriate because it spreads out. You know, the town residents have a, have a pull or have a role in this too. Most of us, all of us are benefiting from the water and sewer system. And if we've got a food and lodging route, that would again be targeting our, our local businesses in the town. And obviously, we want any of the, the residents would be free riders on that sort of.
Well, office residents asked that question to me, and John, you were going to check to see if we could use the revenue for meals?
We can use the revenue, Mary. And we're using it now.
Oh, we are, yeah.
We are using it now, yeah. That's what I was saying. We've been lucky because we've run a very taut relatively. There's still some room. But we run a fairly taut ship for the town's operating expenses, so every year, we've been transferring money to cover this. We haven't been leaving completely off of it, but we, we transfer money from that. Which is not even close to the agreement of those loans, but we transfer money from the general fund every year to cover these loans, to cover the expenses of the water and sewer plant.
Well, the meals and lodging tax hasn't, I don't think ever been raised. Patrick, you would know this.
I know it very well. Yes. It doesn't need to be because we're increasing it fifteen percent per year, but that isn't enough. What is enough?
I-
You're increasing income.
I, I was not, I was not in this council before twenty nineteen, so I will not speak of the actions that my predecessors took. But actions were taken to create the water and sewer system in this town. And now the bills for those actions have to be paid. Members of this council, the town, and the, and the citizens decided to create a water and sewer plant and take on debt to do so. And the servicing of that debt has obstructed the ability of this town to pay. And we have been lucky to have windfalls in the past through the sales of various properties, et cetera, and to be able to pay those extra expenses from the town reserves to essentially avoid this very hard conversation. But those times are over. There is no money left, especially after twenty twenty, even though we've heard bounce back, or D N's bounce back. It's not, it's not enough. It, it's not enough because what would happen if we draw it down to zero is if Dr. Ben there isn't any incident in the town or of the water or sewer system, we wouldn't be able to pay it. We simply would not be able to pay it, so we're going around and demanding X over X additional payments from all the water and sewer users to cover the expenses.
Uh, we have comments. You and your hand up first?
I can. I'm Bob. As the general manager of the inn, just a couple of points occurred to me, um, and kind of to reiterate what Patrick was talking about for one entity. So, I would imagine that the increase would equate to, I'm guessing, maybe four hundred dollars or so per household per year? Would it be more than that, less than that? I'm not quite sure.
It'd be a little, yeah, it'd be about three hundred dollars.
Right, so ours, ours would be in excess of thirty-six thousand dollars. So, that's like asking, and that comes right out of the profit, which is the owner's money. So, that would be like passing the hat in town and asking everybody for thirty-six thousand dollars to help pay for this. And I don't think it's fair or right. Um, so, it's been stated that the water and sewer plant was put in poorly, maintained poorly, and the, and the, and the, not enough tax was put in as, as anticipated. So, why would the inn have to pay that? I would suggest, and I'm not making any promises, and I'm not going on the record with any numbers, but I can tell you that the momentum we are feeling at the inn with the cafe coming on, we'll go seven days with rooms, our occupancy has increased. You can't find a room there until June, which is a record. You have a record revenue here this year. Cafe coming on will be a couple of million dollars extra revenue. The event center coming next year is going to be more revenue. I almost say, watch the meals and lodging tax increase more than you're anticipating and hold off.
And again, I would say we're stepping it, six months, one step, six months, another step. We're inserting a requirement that'll be reviewed annually. So, if meals and lodging tax comes up to meet it, I see no reason not to roll back.
I would love to see an example of a political body in this country that would lower taxes because they met their goals. I would defy any challenge. So, I'm an advocate of the inn, obviously.
And why is the town of Washington as unique?
It's very unique because you have one entity that pays for it.
Joe?
Uh, we've got a couple of, uh, I want to just follow what I was saying.
We, we say we put in the first grade increase, and you said in six months, it could be the second.
Right.
Assuming construction needs to fall into role when the cafe goes open, and I will pass that, that would be a real plus in the town. If we see great money from that, is there any restriction that we could hold off the second increase?
Absolutely not. No. I mean, there's no reason we could not.
Oh, sure. If we did the first increase, it just sort of gives us a little cushion. And, and then we say, we have a scheduled increase six months out, but-
We can also require that the council take additional action to implement that.
That's what I'm saying. Let's, let's say that we would review that in, yeah, you know, three, four months following being open to the cafe and working with him on some of these numbers. And, uh, it is my understanding that, uh, there may be another venue in town that's going to generate probably some meals and some tax revenue. I don't know how much it'll be, but, you know, that then- But, you know, that then adds some dollars, and with the work we're doing to try to reduce operating expenses and things, um, maybe that's, that's one way to sort of, you know, mitigate some of this or compromise. You know, let's do the first increase, but then put the second increase on reviews.
Yeah, no, that's, that's perfectly correct.
Yeah. All right. Uh, Kier, Mr. Judy?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Kier Witz, and I'm a resident of the Hampton District, and I represent the Hampton voting district on the Rapid County Board of Supervisors. Um, previously, many of you know, I served on the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority Board, where I was vice chairman for a number of years. And I have spoken to the town council previously about what I think is this opportunity to work closely with the County Water and Sewer Authority, which operates this Sperryville wastewater treatment plant and then the two school systems. And by working together with them, I think you could focus instead on cost reductions as opposed to where, where are we going to increase revenue? Looking at your accounts payable this month, aside from your note payment to the Virginia Resource Authority, it looks like you have about twenty thousand dollars in ongoing expenses on a monthly basis. And I don't have the full annual picture in front of me. But I continue to believe when you pay bills to, for example, Univar, which presumably for chemicals, uh, small expenses to USA Blue Book, and then most importantly, notably, your monthly payment to E S S at a coal paper, it again occurs to me, especially now that we're having this discussion about a very painful potential rate increase, that it would be a disservice to the citizens of the town, including your most significant and virtual users, to not open a discussion with the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority. Unfortunately, I don't believe there's a representative from the Sewer Authority here, so, um, they're not. I think it's important for them to hear this discussion, and hopefully they will. Uh, but I, I really urge you, now is the time. Again, I mentioned this several times over the years, in a town of our size, the idea that you have wastewater treatments from the town of Washington, and five miles down the road, there's another one. And they're operated completely independently, to me makes no common or fiscal sense. So given that you're potentially putting this painful rate increase forward, move, move the revenue question aside and focus on cost reductions and see if you can't reduce these, what appear to be twenty thousand dollar a month recurring costs, see if you can't reduce those to the tune of perhaps four or your fifty thousand dollars a year, which would be equal to the proposed rate increase. So I just encourage you as, as, as your local governing body to please contact the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority and see if there is not an opportunity for the chief economy to scale and purchasing chemicals and bulk. And most importantly, using the staff there, perhaps in expanded form, to maintain your system instead of paying a crack contract for a coal paper. Thank you very much.
So, you know, uh, I've already been down at this Sperryville plant, and we're already talking about looking at all the chemicals they use, all the chemicals we use. Um, I don't know about the schools, because those are totally different.
Correct, correct.
Set schools, so I don't know what they use. But, um, they're compiling the list of all the chemicals, um, are supposed to be the same thing. So we're going to compare what is parallel and tend to look at, you know, if we bulk up, how much are we using? Maybe if we bought a larger quantity on a quarterly basis.
Right.
And beyond that is to see if there are any state contracts. Um, state or county buys lots of everything. So maybe some of these chemicals are available under a state contract with cuts in dollars. So already on top of looking at those types of items, uh, Blue Book expenditures, you know, those are insolvent. You know, items that just haven't come about. You need a certain added pump, and those go out. We repair stuff. Uh, much to E S S's credit, we may pay for that service. But they do, those hours that we spend, they're rebuilding equipment, they're repairing stuff. Otherwise, we'd have to buy brand new out there because nobody else rebuilds it. But fortunately, T J is a very capable fellow and very knowledgeable, and so he does save us a very deal of money. Um, beyond that, uh, the laboratory works that get done, you know, it's all coordinated through E S S. I don't know that, you know, the lab in Sperryville would be qualified, you know, to do that uh, because of how we're recording it and stuff. So, you know, laboratory services, there may not be any advantage there. So the bulk of what the E S S contract for is those hours. It's really a lot about the hours. And we're working to see that, you know, can we trim it, can we adjust it? Uh, what I hear just sort of, um, you know, often, if you will, like you said, is I'm looking at a particular process that may significantly reduce how much we spend hauling sludge. And that was one of my first conversations that prompted me to go down there was to find out how do they haul the sludge, how is it being disposed of? And could we combine our volume, what's generated there, brought to Washington, blended with our sludge, and then haul that maybe in larger truckloads? But again, I've got another idea that a sludge disposal instead of being monthly, might be quarterly. Might be once every six months. And then it goes over the mountain to Page County to be disposed in a landfill. So these are things that actually need to be figured out. There's a few dollars involved to do that, but the savings are significantly enough to offset it. So, you know, I'm digging through this in every way I can. I'm an environmentalian by degree, and that's what I was trained to do, is to design these kinds of facilities. So I can look at them and say, I think I've got a better idea, or I'm going to look at the box and figure out how we can do that. The, the limitations we run into are those that are state codes and regulations and anything that could impact the ultimate quality of the asset. And that's when we run into, you know, a wall there, we say, you can't do that because it's going to, we're going to have issues or whatever. But outside of that, anything we can do internally, yeah, we're free to do, and that's what I'm looking for, you know? So, yeah, I'm, I'm on top of that. And again, the way Sperryville operates is much different than our town. So again, it's, you know, not getting, you know, you try to say, well, let's take the two to work together, but they can't conflict in any way that would, you know, impact our operations.
Right, and that's, and I appreciate all of that. It's very encouraging. And setting us on all the auxiliary material and overhead costs, which are somewhat of material. Really, the big ticket item is your contract with E S S. And several years ago, the Sewer Authority did approach the town. Uh, I wasn't part of that negotiation to offer you a monthly service fee to operate your system. And you all know what you need, and you all know the, the level of attention and time that you're going to need from staff. But I really believe that that's where you need to focus. Could the Sewer Authority possibly add staff that could cover those systems? And what would that mean for your users in terms of reduced operating costs? And to me, that's the key point, and that's a difficult, I understand it's a very difficult question. And no doubt you're doing great service with the E S S. The question is, can you get great service from our county staff? And I think you can by working with them. And perhaps on an expanded basis, that team over in Sperryville could provide to you the same level of service or data to E S S, a significant cost savings to your citizens. So that's really.
It, it can be looked at. Again, I'll sit down, again, sit down, try to recharge and look at some of those things.
Just when you're, they have a comment on, on all that. I was involved with a negotiation on behalf of the town with the Sewer Authority in Sperryville during Mayor Sullivan's term of office. And we had worked out a lot of the details, such as sharing an operator, time schedule, a part-time person that's to cover, when that person would be on vacation or, you know, working five days a week, the other two days. And had really rolled up our sleeves and taken a very close look at it. And then we got the proposal from the Sperryville Sewer Authority. And it was not based on partnership. They viewed the town as a profit center. And we just never said a word after that. It was unfortunate.
I would, and I'm aware of that history, and I would say in light of what you're facing now, now is the time with a, a different group of people, a relatively different group of people on the Sewer Authority, the county Sewer Authority, to revisit that discussion. But I'm, I'm.
It saves so much time.
I understand, I understand, but I think it would be time well spent.
Kier, I was asked that you point out in, in those previous conversations that we had gone down this route before. It's not that we've been ignoring those.
I understand, yes.
At the time, the deal was not practical. If it's different now, we'd happily work with the county again, but don't pretend like we haven't tried.
No, I understand that, yeah.
But that's not our conversation. I appreciate you for everything.
One, one additional thing, while all that was going on, we paid a separate contract fee of around thirty thousand dollars a year to monitor and maintain the water system. And we renegotiated our contract with E S S, but they absorbed that and did the sewer and water system for the same fee that they were charging just for the wastewater system. So we were really trying to put the squeeze on, on getting everything down. Wanted to mention one other thing, that when the sewer system came about, the town was under huge pressure from the Department of Health to do something because they knew what was going on here in the town is, is a public health threat. Um, and so they actually arranged for the, the loan was interest-free for the whole time and then gave the town an additional four hundred thousand dollar grant to get everything moving along because they realized this was, it was a strain on the town with a number of users that they had. But at the same time, the health department's view of the thing was that it was something the town had to do. That the health department, just ancient history here, you know, for repair turbines, to keep drain field in operation in the town, let's just say that the standards that they used were very favorable to the town, given the soil conditions and all that. And that couldn't last forever. So at some point, you know, you just wouldn't be able to flush a toilet in the town unless you had a central system, so. But, um, it wasn't, it wasn't the tight situation where let's have a, a central sewer system. It was.
It wasn't done in that way, really. It was taken under very consideration.
Judy?
Uh, I was going to propose something, but I decided not to. Uh, but I'm curious, when I look at the budget now, what is the payment on the note each year?
As a matter of fact, that's just a number we will.
I'm sorry.
That says, as a matter of fact, that's just a number we will.
Oh, because when I look at where we are, we're actually very good financial shaped budget wise, just looking at the town budget. Right now, you're two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars ahead of where you budget to be at this point. I just subtracted expenses year to date with income year to date. And your income is a hundred and sixty-six percent what you proposed, and your expenses are forty-nine percent. I am just curious about, I only see, particularly looking at the city councilman, uh, O'Connell, that number going up. And so I'm curious about what that money is scheduled to be used for.
I'm sorry, did you guys miss that while I was getting the other number? What'd you say?
Can you repeat what you just asked?
I want to know, since you are so far ahead on revenue, drawing a half in the tune of two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, with Mr. O'Connell explaining that even more money will probably, that number is only going to grow, that disparity between revenue and expense. What you are planning to do with that two sixty-three five?
Well, uh, a hundred and fifty-three thousand, fifty-seven dollars of it will go to pay water and sewer.
Okay. And what is the usual number for the, isn't that two years worth?
That's one year.
That's just one?
That's one year. That was 2019.
Okay.
In 2018, it was a hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and nine hundred dollars. In 2017, it was two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. And in 2016, it was two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars.
So I'm not understanding, this is the note I'm talking about?
I'm not talking about the note. That's the, I'm not talking about the note. That's the cost to operate the system in, in excess of what the revenue for the system is.
Okay, but how much is the note?
The note is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars a year.
So that hundred and fifty-three, even looking at my two sixty-three, I just want to know what, where that money is going to be targeted to while you work out what will happen with the water and sewer.
I'm afraid I don't follow.
I'm asking if, if you need, I think you need to raise the water sewer rate. The issue raised about commercial kind of run my pen right now. But, uh, what I'm saying is, and, and the plan calls for continuing to raise.
Of course, yep, yep.
The water sewer rate. And they, the town had gone a long time without raising the water sewer. It was twelve dollars when I moved to 19 years ago. There was no sources. So I get all that, but I am curious if, uh, we do this first piece, but still we have this extra revenue. We're going to have, we'll waste three hundred thousand dollars in revenue and it's not committed to expenses.
It's, it accumulates and then it's paid out quarterly. It's cumulative, it accumulates and it's paid out quarterly on the, on the loan for the, for the sewer system. So it does fluctuate up and down. We pay a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars a year for the sewer system. Give me just a minute. I'll do some quick math. Three hundred and fifty-one, we will pay, if you took 2019 as an example, we spent three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars on a water and sewer plant. In that year, the water and sewer plant together only brought in two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, and I understand the ongoing problem. We're talking about this particular year. And even going forward, since I recall, it's a pretty obscure budget with tight now. So this year, we're going to end up with an additional three hundred thousand dollars?
When we hit spend in June, it won't be. But by the time we do our debt servicing, because of the way that it's strung out, there won't be, there will not be any residue at the end of the year as it's currently. If it is, it'll be, I'll be shocked, but.
So I think what he's saying, too, is.
The card. There's a delay because of the various payments that we have to meet and pass-throughs and on, uh, because we'll have another quarterly payment for the loan, that money, by June, we will be, if we're lucky, will be.
So just number on, on expenses year to date.
Yeah.
Where you're at forty-nine percent.
Yeah.
You budgeted two twenty-three.
Is that just a general fund or is that for?
I'm looking at, I'm just, I'm just looking at that trigger.
General fund.
So you're saying you're going to.
That will be zero. That, we will not have any remaining revenue in the year. I can, I can assure you of that, and it won't be the price of this management. Yeah, that is just a general fund, so that money will eventually be transferred to cover the expenses of the water and sewer plant. We accumulated in the general fund, and even though frankly, it's probably ceiling close to the limit as far as the way we're required to finance the water and sewer plant, we accumulated in the general fund and it's transferred because we had excess in the town, as I said, because the town operation was pretty narrow. We then have been able to transfer that excess money to cover the water and sewer plant and the water and sewer plant bonds and loans.
Okay.
It's a town's fault. You're looking at the general fund.
There are three different.
And there's three different groupings, so.
I understand.
I wish it were different, but that can probably, the end of that comes out upside down.
Just a little side note, that, um, a couple of years ago, and I think it was probably back when Laura was handling it. Um, we weren't clearly breaking out water and sewer costs and expenses and revenues. The numbers were just big numbers, and they just kind of flowed through, and nobody really understood. And it was one of the things that I had asked for was, you know, can this flow out? Can we really create separation? So we know what is our general fund, what is the water worth, and what is the wastewater? And that's what we're doing now. So it's clearer. I mean, we've been running the same problem for years and years. You know, we were up here, and we've been in this slow decline, but it was masked because the numbers weren't clear. And now we've done that, we've totally redone our accounting system.
To make it more accurate and clearer.
To make it more accurate, to make it clearer, you know, kudos to Barbara and Gail and Laura. Laura explained a lot of things, how it's being handled, but to really make our accounting system work like it should. And so that's why we're seeing these numbers and that's why they become a little alarming. But hopefully, as you understand, again, how revenues come in and then where they move back and forth to cover our various entities. And let's say we have basically three pots that we have to dimmit to wastewater, water and general. And so that's, so that's why you're getting a clearer picture now than we had in the year to past.
All right, I have Jean and then Jean.
Okay, my question also is about process. When I look at the percentage proportion increase, how do you come up with, who came up with these percentage numbers and how did the difference?
Uh, it was a rough, and I will do my best to speak for the, for our team treasurer who's not here, but it was a rough estimate to get to a revenue target that was not too difficult.
Not too extreme.
Too extreme, I guess, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we were sort of seeing, how could you do it to get within that sort of $40,000 or $50,000 range? By spreading it across the various accounts without making one jump huge. I mean, if we were really, if we were accounting for this properly, we would do like a 50% increase on your sewer bill and only like a an almost negligible increase on your water bill, but to balance that out, we also seem to have to sort of shift the numbers a little bit so it's a little proportionate share. And then try not to completely make our, our businesses and town bear the same burden as the residents. So a slight break for the higher water consumers. I say slight, it's not, it's only 1.5% lower, but.
And we're probably looking historically back and then trying to have a crystal ball.
Yeah, it's hoping, our hope was that if we came in around 45 or 50, if we had some more connections this year, we all hope, I think we will, that we would end up being in a place where we were pretty even and would not require any additional increases going forward. That I don't like to budget on hope, but that was our sort of going assumption. So trying to find the right ratio of numbers that would get us in the targeted range, we think, for a revenue increase, but you know, not make it too difficult.
Because of that, I know from years past, I quit job, but we were thought, but that's a really tricky thing, figuring out.
And revenue predictions are
Well, and how much is, perhaps it'll be increased in terms of business and a number of those percentages. And so you're saying basically you and Gail and Brian?
Yeah, yeah. They're best.
And so there's a communal effort to try to come up with something for that.
And the things that come out of left field, who predicted that we'd be in that?
Well, I'm talking about percentage of
Yeah, I understand.
However, that, I mean, that, you have to weigh that into the factor, it skewed everything. And so while you do your budgeting, you do your planning, and suddenly, bam, this hits you. And so, okay, things all shift and then you lose a revenue generator that's not going to come back. So, you know, it's still there in your planning, but you know.
We didn't do it. We looked at historic income and expenses and tried to base it on that and adjust it so that it wasn't. We spread it out as much as we could, but we did, we had done the numbers, or I had done the numbers last year, knowing that we needed to do something moderate about the rates, but certainly the last 2020 quarter, we'll put it even further behind frankly. You know, they're not looking at it.
Judy?
Yeah, okay.
Do you remember?
So I just had, I seem to remember at the last town council meeting, it was some discussion going back to the revenue side as opposed to the cost side of possibly being some kind of money out there that you could apply for to cover shortfalls, and I'm wondering if anybody thought of on that?
Well, under the new round of
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, coming from Washington, there may be some money in there. But we all know, because we don't know exactly how it gets distributed, because it'll go to the states and the states take it down, the county, the county to us. So we don't know how much and by what criteria would it allow, you know, could we get some money to be handled?
I can add something, though, if I could, if I could get revenue.
Okay.
If the ratio remains the same as it did for the previous round, when it is finally adjusted, we may well be very close to being able to retire one of the loans to put out control for this.
Okay.
So that's why the assistance that we wanted to revisit it, I know a lot of people's want to give government good faith to, I expect everybody should tell them to say, hey, Judy figured out the rates, we made it. So.
So you're on that?
What's that?
Are you there?
I'm even I'm on it for the COVID relief side. I think myself and Gail waiting to see if we get the, if we, what the amount of relief is and then how best to apply that to potentially retire either some debt or some others, which would certainly impact.
Right, I'm just trying to, and the only thing I think about, between the commercial and the, is it a different, are you, is it a different rate?
Yes.
Okay, so are they paying the same, more, less?
Uh, it's 1.5% less. The increase is 1.5% less for commercial users.
But, but the, but the?
Uh, no, no, they start out at the same, it's just that they, all of us in town have the same trigger points, so if you go over the consumption, so you know, they're the ones who will go over that consumption line.
Okay.
I mean, generally speaking, some do.
But just
Yeah, I don't think you go that you will go over, because I've got nasty phone calls about that.
But the other side of that, the way I'm, have to speak about it is basically that, and I don't know this, so it's some kind of understanding. In many towns, in order to encourage the business, they give them more, is that a fair statement? Okay. But it makes sense.
It doesn't make purpose sense.
And just to kind of complete that conversation, one of the things that ESS is doing is reviewing both our waterworks and the wastewater. And we're coming up with a complete list of all the repairs, all the improvements, all the upgrades, everything we need, we can think of. You know, whether it's restaining the building, whether it's, I mean, all this, this and that. So once we have that list, then we can go back and start putting value to it. And then they get kind of grouped and everything else. Then we can start looking to see, is there a grant from EPA? Or is there a program from USDA? And that is usually the vehicle that money is funneled through to municipalities like ours. So we'd have to go look, find out, are there grants, are there, and we want grants as opposed to any more loans.
Right.
But we're thinking that there probably are and have been under their normal, regular budgets. But now with the infrastructure plan, and as that gets some legs underneath it, that may be even better for us because we can take a bigger risk and say, this is what we need. And then we have a better shot at getting dollars to do the things we want to do. So while, you know, we're looking down one, trying to retire the loans, there's some grants from COVID relief, whatever. We may find some other things that allow us to do some of the long-term repairs and upgrades that are, yeah, are by grant and don't affect us so that then we start bringing that budget number, you know, are we bringing cost numbers down? That funnels back into our rates and as we've said, there's nothing prevents us from bringing the rate down. Once we've got everything, you know, under control and we're better.
Right, so I guess my personality such that I would respond to that, yeah, that sounds wonderful, you know, keep at it. But I would go to ESS and I would say, given the, what I perceive as the dire nature of the financial thing, which didn't just happen because of COVID, it was here long before COVID and I haven't been in town here in a couple of years and I can see that, right? And I'm no financial genius, that ESS maybe could get that to you by a date certain so that you could then go and investigate the potential for that funding through whatever vehicle.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of, what I'm hearing is there's a lot of, we're working on, and I know you guys are, I'm not criticizing. But at some point, there needs to be deadlines, so.
Can I just say that it seems to me that, given all this uncertainty, that Brad's suggestion about reviewing in six months rather than a year makes sense. And couldn't we think about a proposal for 7.121 and postpone any thought or any decision about 1122? And tell some of these issues get resolved?
I think that's, I think that's Yeah, there's no discrepancy in that.
And we can require additional public hearing and additional meeting of council to approve a second, incremental review of the finances for the time.
Mr. Mayor, what is the typical or average residential bill for water?
It's $67.
Right now, it's $67.
$67.
A typical person uses less than $3,000 gallons.
That's typically the household does bill the minimums.
Yeah, it's relatively rare kind of, I won't speak for everyone, but I, I I only got a phone call from a neighbor once and it was because she had a leak in the toilet and didn't realize it, it got more over $3,000. But this would make it, if we go up one increment, we're at 76.50. And if you go the whole way, we're at $84.
All right, any other comments from the public?
Just have a degree of rate line growth consideration. So as we continue to grow and add meals and lodging tax, which is used also for the sewer, I think with the growth that's coming and if this proposed tax increase is combined, I think in a year's time, we would be paying an additional, insert it, $70,000, $75,000 more dollars to the coffers if combined, if not more. So I would propose maybe the council considers to total dollar amount contribution from our business versus a total combined growth, because it's a pretty substantial amount given. So if that makes sense, I think if we kept our business the same and didn't raise prices, we would be generating an additional 36 or so thousand from the water bill. So with the increased business, it'd be more than double that. So perhaps there's a consideration of a tax break of a certain level.
Maybe I also add on that subject, about warm months, summer, 12 to 15% of our water consumption is used to water plants and flowers and shrubbery throughout the town. And many people have suggested to me on my team that we should extinguish that and not have any coffers. And I'm very reluctant to do that because I feel it enhances anyone's visit to the town and makes the place a pleasanter place to be. So currently, we're paying not only for the water, which we're putting into the ground, but we're paying for sewer charge as well. So if a consideration could be thought through of how we could monitor that or if we could dig our Tijin well used only for agricultural purposes, it would ease some of this bill, which is this rate going to come near to 15,000 a month for one entity.
I would say historically, there's a precedent for that. When we first, at this Trinity Church, said about how they have to water their plants and their, in fact, rate was reduced for water because it was felt that it was doing a service for the family. So that's just my historical perspective, but it's not, it hasn't done in fast.
Might I say something, though? There is a precedent given to the inn for a main sheltering.
A coolant tower?
Yes.
Yes, we have a recirculating coolant tower that takes water and circulates it until it evaporates. So many years ago, we explained we had a precise number of gallons that we could compute and we put a separate meter on that and it helped immensely, but it is a little painful to see people water for five hours a day and know that you've been charged for sewer use as well and it's going to the ground. I happen to like flowers.
I love the flowers, so I totally understand. I think if you, you know, if you go to any municipality, the sewer, the water bill comes and the sewer bills on it, whether they're watering the flowers or putting it down the toilet, you know, all the case. That being said, it's not beyond the possibility of monitoring the actual sewage being pumped from native. Now, what a cost could install that? I don't know, and who bears that cost? I don't know. You know, because some of those things, oh, this would be great, you can solve that problem, but bang, what's the cost to do that? There are meters that can do that. So in the long-term looking at this, maybe that is an option that gives the inn a bit of rate because again, during the warm months, yeah, you're using a fair amount of water, you've got to keep the fountain full and such. So, you know, that hurts, that's a question. Putting it in another well, you know, somewhere in back property could work as long as you're not posting hoses everywhere. So, yeah, I mean, those are, those are distinct possibilities. And again, thankfully, we have technology that can be applied and that may work. That might be a, you know, a viable solution if we run into, sort of ESS is in the corner. Maybe that is something we can start to look at and I'd be more than happy to, you know, explore that and look at that kind of, you know, answer or something.
I feel I shouldn't move this, but are you employed by ESS?
No, not anyway.
Well, who is your employer?
I'm self-employed, basically, so I'm retired, so.
I see.
Yeah.
Well, we're very lucky. You're on a voluntary basis with all of this expertise.
We are very lucky.
I'll say it for
To, to use a well overused phrase, I'm here to serve.
We are very fortunate to have
We are.
Thank you. And we have. It feels like there's some work that needs to be done. Is this something that we can look at and table for a month? Ben? Let's ask you first from a legal perspective, because we have to go through the whole re-advertising for public hearing and so on.
You can leave the public hearing open because the way the word, ad is worded, it specifically says it may be carried over as the meeting to other dates. Obviously, you can leave a public hearing open and continue that to the next date that you want to. As far as what's under consideration, we cannot raise any portion of the rates under the ad that's already been run, but you can reduce that.
Okay, I think I understood that. Okay. We also ran into a time constraint because we have to have a new budget approved as of the 1st of July in 2021. And there's a process that we need to go through in order to have that budget approved by the 1st of July. We, we may have to go have a special meeting. I'm not, I don't know the calendar right now off the top of my head of whether we can do it. It was an hour in April, we did May, enough when I had Not when I have enough time to get things done for, unless we defer to redefine the budget for the first month. I'm just talking while thinking how far along. But it sounds like there's enough things here that would call for a deferral to evaluate some of these things for a month. If not for a special meeting in two weeks' time or something like that. Trying to get some of this stuff nailed down. I think we have in front of us one proposal that, Joe, I think came from you, which is to look at just the increases in July as stated on this form and then reevaluate before implementing a second set of increases. There has been some talk of trying to figure out some other ways to do a way that we might be able to do some cost cutting and we might have in a month's time a better assessment of where things stand in terms of revenue from different sources. I mean, truthfully, we're under a very hard and fast deadline of this deficit coming up to us. And I understand from Mr. Bass and from Patrick about the potential that we have from patios. There is not anything formal, but we've had some good presentations about the possibilities on what is the Black Hettle property. But nothing is, we don't have anything that allows us to figure out what the offset might be in terms of the income. And we have projections. And the problem is that we have a very definite deficit that is very facing us, staring us in the face. And one of the things I feel that it's important to note is that the town was really in a corner when they had to put in place the wastewater and water system back 10 years ago. And some things we have found in the last several years perhaps were not done as well as they should have been. But I think we have found, and again, I trust Brad on this, that ESS has helped us run it as efficiently as we can, considering the situation. Granted, what Mr. Winston says, there may be some opportunities for some economies of scale that bring you to even higher level efficiency. But I think there was one point made that it was poorly set up and poorly run. And I think that I would admit to the first, but I would take umbrage with the latter. I think we've tried really hard to run it as well as we can. So we have one notice from, from Mr. Whitehead, I want to amend the motion. I guess I am making another motion that we table this discussion until we can have some more information. And I guess since that might precede or a precedent over yours, Joe, only because it's not changing yours in any way. But it gives us a chance to get some more information and to try and work on something. I don't know if I need to have anything more than a roll call vote of a motion to do this. It's not really making an ordinance or anything like that. But that's this motion just to table this
It's your motion of the second.
And then a vote.
Right. Outsetting the motion.
All right. I'm trying to make sure I make the motion correctly. General, you were right with that.
And then I present the numbers, how we make the sausages. It's a point to let
Right. Then I will make
Just before you do that, Sharone had her hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Throw the last one before we
Try to answer the question because my question was, is the plant up to the task to take on, you know, extra things that I don't want to expand out with the
Yes, yes. So we did an assessment last fall and found out that we are about 50% capacity.
Okay, because I remember when Gary, my business Gary was here and he was talking about that there was a lot of problems that were going on with the plant down there and about, you know, the stress on it and mechanics and the safety even because of things that were going on with them. And also was going to ask about the situation of the settlement that's run off from the post office down there right now. If they can put more things to control more of the settlement that's going down into the little streams there that is starting to fill up the pond and stuff around the area. It's raising the level of the ponds, like sun pond right across the road there.
All right. That seems like that's a different issue than
Yeah, because I just noticed that the boundary line, because I remember originally it said it would be like 15 feet from all the property, which is right on the
Right, so this, this seems like this is getting to another issue.
Okay, well, one other point I want to make is there's a little thing in progress that says don't muddle the ox that tread the corn. So I took that toward the inn. I mean, the inn has a lot of feelings and tact here, I understand that. But I understand that if it wasn't for the inn, then other than where we would be, you would have
Thank you. Thank you.
Two things. One, I think
I'm sorry, do you mind introducing yourself?
Kevin Adams, my husband and I have a business here in town. The people that live in this town, the businesses that are in this town, have a responsibility to take care of the waste sort of treatment system with or without the inn. And so the decision to have X percentage increase for the individuals that live in this town, I feel should reflect a little more to the big picture, taking into account the significance of what the inn contributes to the town. The other issue is on one of her comments. The waste sort of treatment system, I understand, can increase 50%. What is the, I don't know what the word is for the water that goes into the river. Where are we with regards to percentage of that going into the river? How much can we increase that? As much, well, whatever the plant process We are not at a limit, we're not in No, your ethylene is not limited. What you do is you have a permit issued to you on basically your daily process. So you're staying in process as much. And if it turns out we're processing 60,000 gallons a day and 60,000 is what we're discharging, great. If we increase it to 65,000 and our discharge is 65,000, then that's fine too. So they don't, they don't restrict it because otherwise where would the water go? Now, water can be used for other things and there's municipalities across the country that do programs to irrigate farmland and do all different things. We don't really have an option that's not really practical, but we're not limited in, that was my question, we're not limited in how much ethylene we can produce. We're only limited in what the ethylene quality can be.
Yeah, the $400,000 grant was conditioned upon keeping the nitrogen load below a certain level.
Yep.
And it's a pretty strict standard. And when we built the plant, it was the state of the art plant in the Commonwealth. To refresh everybody's memory, we were having trouble getting a permit for the discharge. So there was a lot of balls in the air when all this was happening.
Thank you. All right. Is there any more comments from the public? If not, I will close the public's hearing. And I will make a motion that we table this discussion to the May, what is the date that's on here, May 10th date? If we find that because of time crunch, we have to do it before that point, can I also make that part of the motion, Mr. Bennett, or should I just? All right. Or a date sooner than that as will be advertised? Or do we advertise or how?
We would have to figure out a date, anyone, but, you know, say that this meeting is continued to that date.
All right, let's say to either the May 3rd or May 10th. Because the 26th, I know you have a planning commission here. Am I correct? Well, if we wanted to meet before, if we had to set up a meeting to discuss this before, why don't we just go with May 10th?
May 10th and you call a special meeting.
Yeah, let's just go and go with May 10th. So that is the motion I'd like to make. Second, board, roll call vote to approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much. That was a good and important discussion. So the town council is, will consider authorizing advertising for a public hearing for the fiscal year 2122 budget. That would be so that we could have a public hearing at May. So we will have to make sure that that happens after we've had this continuation of the discussion on the rates. So just make sure on the agenda for May that it would show that. And that's really all we need to do is I guess have a motion to authorize the advertising for a public hearing for the fiscal year 2122 town budget to occur to May 10th meeting. Can I have a motion for sitting?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Joe, second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Jean. Roll call vote to approve? Patrick, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Last item for discussion by members of the town council is a discussion of the guidelines for the fireworks displays. A little background on this, Marianne?
The issue for us tonight is whether we as a town want to regulate fireworks displays in the town. Currently, the town has no say in the issuance of permits. It all falls under the county. If a person or business, a resident or a business wants to have fireworks displays, they have to apply to the county and the county approves it. And it's based mostly or solely actually on safety, life safety. And copies of the application go to all the fire departments and to the sheriff's office. Why we are here tonight is we're going to rewind back to last summer when the county received about five complaints from residents about the fireworks in the town. And the complaints range from the late hour, the frequency, the pets being, people's pets being traumatized, their dogs and cats, and so on. And the county reached out to us to come up with some sort of guidelines or ordinance or something and play a role in this because we have not ever played a role in it. So if the town does decide to regulate fireworks regarding the hour, the frequency, the duration of them, the county would still handle the safety issue of it, the fire safety issue of it. So here we are tonight, trying to decide how to make everybody happy. And if you feel like this is the way to proceed, we could have a public hearing next month and to discuss it, and we can also discuss it during the public forum tonight. The public can discuss it. So that's about where we are right now and that's sort of the background.
And Frank?
Yeah.
May I say something additionally about the history of fireworks in Little Washington? Going back to 2015. In 2015, there was one fireworks display that year. In 2016, there was zero. In 2017, zero. In 2018, one was given for the town called Instock. And much enjoyed, I'm told, because everyone was invited to attend freely. In 2019, we had zero displays. In 2020, we had one in June, two in July, one in August, and one in September, a total of five. In 2021, there have been one. So the question is, does a town of 133 residents need to control something which is as infrequently taking place as this? And may I also say, I think we should pause momentarily to reflect how fortunate we all are to live in a place where we have nothing more important to do than worry about fireworks display when the rest of the world seems to be deteriorating and biting and warring and looting and here we are in this utopian situation and we've got our niggers and twists because of a fireworks display. Now, I think we have the ability as good neighbors to compromise, work together as we are trying to, to allow a young couple who had to cancel their wedding, for example, as the one on Saturday night because of COVID, but yet they wanted to invite their friends and family out to a safe environment and have a four-minute fireworks display, which was told to the citizens of the town. Is that correct?
Yeah.
In advance. And a number of citizens at each one of these few displays show up and thank us profusely, even though it's not our demonstration, for how much they enjoy it, how much joy it brings to them and it's free. And they step out of their house or watch from their porch or whatever. So we have endeavored to limit them and to tell our guests that they're limited to four minutes. We have also asked the pyrotechnic engineer to reduce the amount of noise that is being used. And Bob can speak more detail to that. And we have also agreed that we will not allow it on our property after 10:00 p.m. So I understand when you made a reference to the earlier one that John Sullivan took blame for not alerting the town and some people did not know what was happening. So we decided from that point on that certainly we may would go out to every town resident advising them in advance that such a display was about to take place.
You know, I agree with you on virtually everything that you said. I think what triggered this, and I have to say, I've lived in this town for almost 25 years. Never, ever did the fireworks become an issue. I mean, people love them whenever they happen, but they rarely happen.
Right.
But last summer, there were five from, I think it was June 13th to September 7th. And that's when, that's when the complaints started coming in because it was a van, van, van like that. And then they worry that it's going to be like that again. Most of the complaints are from people who have pets who are so concerned because the pets get traumatized or if for some reason the fireworks don't go on as the town notified of. It was, I think, the last one was supposed to be 10:15 to 10:50 and it went on at 9:20 for four minutes. But people plan when they're going to let their pets out to go to the bathroom or whatever, or when they're going to go to bed. So that disrupts them now. Even though it's a small handful that is concerned, there are other residents who, as I said, have animals and pets that are really concerned. that are really concerned. I, on behalf of the town and Fred, we have both, and Brad, and our little task force, we have been working with the Inn and with Bob, and it's been actually wonderful. And we've come a long way. But there are other, there are other people who do want to do fireworks in the town and who have tried to do it, didn't get the application in a time you're supposed to have 15 days. So the town thought what we should do is, and this is not Inn versus town and town versus Inn, is that we need something in writing. So if anybody wants to have a licensed pyrotechnician come into a big fireworks display, that we have something in writing and not leave it all up to the county. And that's basically what we're doing. But we still want to continue to work with the Inn and Bob and work neighborly. So it's not, it's...
But what we do as the town then would be, that would add value to what the county is doing. That's what I want to do.
Okay. So all the county does is be sure that it's a licensed pyrotechnician.
Right.
And they have to have insurance and that, et cetera.
Right.
But if you want to say fireworks can only be no later than 10 o'clock, they have to be finished by 10 o'clock, we could say that. We could say no more than so many per year. But then again, I'm even in the hospitality business. How do you say to a guest or a bride-to-be, "I'm sorry, we can't do more fireworks. We've already done our COVID." So that's one of the things. And then how, so how many, how long, and the decibel level. We were talking to Bob about seeing if that can be reduced. And it was last year, last summer, a couple of times. But this past one, we got a couple of complaints that people thought it was much louder, but that may have been the cloud cover that made it louder. So...
And I talked to Bob, and the reason that is because of the COVID and the local supply chain that the smaller cannons that they use for shooting off the noise-produced fireworks are not as available and the fireworks themselves for that caliber are not as available now as they were before COVID did. Mary, say the last... So this is one of, and I made a mistake. This is a discussion among the town council members. At this point, we will have a public forum after this for comments from the public. And also, we'll have a chance, if we decide to go ahead and do an ordinance. Again, we are not doing an ordinance to try to be punitive. We're trying to do an ordinance in order to help the self-communication, to provide guidance for people who want to go ahead and do fireworks in the future so that we don't have another case as we had with one of the ones last summer where one of our town residents had a cat lost for a day and a half because the cat was traumatized. I understand it's a dog lover, you know, the value of a cat. But for that person, I value very much being part of that pet. What do you think, Jean? So we have some guidelines that I think we've talked with. And we are grateful to the Inn because the Inn, having done fireworks, has allowed us to work with them to try to figure out ways that work to everyone's comfort. One of the things that the Inn is trying to be accommodating on is to have fireworks in by 10 o'clock at night. Second is to give as much advance notice as possible of when the fireworks are going to occur. The third question, which is really a difficult one that I bring in front of members of the council, is the frequency of fireworks. I've had people come up to us, come up to me, both in person or by phone and by email that said we should have one or none a year. And others who were saying that we should have anywhere from 6:00 to 10:00 or what happened. And so I think that's one of the points that I bring to bear at this point and see if there is any thoughts from members of the council.
There was another thing that we were talking with Bob about, which was having a window of, I think, wasn't it 30 minutes? So that you could say fireworks would be...
As technical experts, you can answer.
It was 30 minutes. I have another idea, and I'm a lot of talk though.
May I make a suggestion? We have discussed proposing creating a very pleasant viewing station, a seated viewing platform, complimentary for residents of the town to observe and watch the fireworks. And if we don't need an ordinance, we might also be able to serve beverages there. Maybe extend it, that's all. But I caution this governmental body against overly restricting and creating one ordinance after another when it may not actually be necessary. I'd also like to mention that what we're experiencing is COVID-related. What we're seeing is a continual request for people who were unable to have a large wedding, who want an intimate little ceremony, but they want to create a memory. They want to have a few minutes of photo op with fireworks. And it surprised us. We certainly don't advertise it. But all they can do is they can simply call the pyrotechnic engineer as they might a violin player or a singer or whatever and arrange to have that at their wedding. So it's something which is going to change and probably phase out more or less when they're able to gather in large groups again. At least that is our prediction.
I'd just like to, I move on myself with Patrick's remarks. I mean, I feel like we're chasing a limited time problem for the sake of regulating. I'm sorry that some of these cats have lost for a day and a half. I won't see any reason in regulating fireworks displays about one because of one incident in one year, considering historical data, unless there's some legal and notification reason, which is not striking that there must be a fiduciary or judicious lawyer over there who long ago made us passing ordinance in order to protect ourselves.
Cat really does have a very rigorous process. Marshall comes out, measures all the distances, the houses, all sorts of things. So if they give the okay, if there's a vigorous process...
Institute a very good notification process in the town to let people know what's going to happen. If it's outside of that, about 15 minutes. Sorry, two of those 15 minutes to let your dog... I mean, mine's terrified. She'll go walk herself in the back. Now she manages to do not know. But that doesn't mean I won't walk up in the back and watch fireworks.
So I appreciate an ordinance seems to be officious, but an ordinance is really the only way that we can set up any kind of guidelines for this. And again, this is not geared towards the Inn. This is geared towards trying to provide some guidelines that we can use from here on out. So I appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate also that, as you may have seen in the documents, there are people who are complaining. And I want to be sensitive to that. So I welcome other members of council. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I certainly agree that ordinance is unnecessary. We can have an ordinance every time anyone complains about anything. We're going to overwhelm the ordinances. And I think it may be a passing problem. So it can be visited. It can actually be something that really is becomes a major problem. Personally, I loved it the other night. I've always been with it. But I wouldn't impose my own taste like someone else at all. But I just don't think it's a major problem for this town.
Well, in terms of notification, I brought my pets in at 9:00 because the notice that I had, the only notice I had, they were going off in the 10 o'clock window. And just by chance, I brought my pets in. And pretty much five minutes after I brought them in at 9:20, they went off. To the credit, it was only four minutes. They were the loudest fireworks to date. And I don't care what anybody says because I stood there in my deck. And when I was in my house, my windows rattled. The type of fireworks they used. And I don't care about supply chain, COVID availability, or anything else. The concussive ones that go off, there were spirally ones that have a very, very high pitch. You know, I don't know how they choose them or whatever. But it was the loudest four minutes of fireworks to date as far as I'm concerned. And I was there for all five of the ones in 2020. Again, I definitely knew that it was going to be at the 9:20. So I'm not sure what happened there. And as far as the ordinance, you know, Bill Smith and I had a long discussion about this. And for good or bad, a rural town is growing up. And, you know, you just, some of these things have to get in place. Years ago, you could just say, "Oh, old friends, it's okay." But unfortunately, you know, we're in such a litigious society today that sometimes these things have to be put in place. You know, you can agree or disagree, but it gives you a framework. It gives you something to go upon as opposed to, you know, something hand-sketched or verbally agreed upon or something like that. And I'm not saying this in any way against the Inn. Unlike everybody else, I'm ordered on three sides. My property has three sides that are the Inn. I love the Inn. I maintain our property so that it looks nice. So when people walk the garden path and they see it, the lawns are low, they look pretty, they sort of blend in with the Inn's property. My fireworks, hours and hours in her gardens producing flowers for her own pleasure. But we always welcome guests to come over and talk and visit. When our dally bet comes in, everybody raves about that. In fact, Valium approached me last year and said several guests thought it belonged to the Inn, how lovely it was, and could they take pictures? And we encouraged them to do that because, again, it's a labor of love on our property. But I'm concerned about the fireworks, the number of events. And once it gets started, it can be very slippery slope. So, you know, again, whether it's the ordinance or something else we have in town to try to sort of police this, you know, again, I'm not sure where it goes, but I think we can visit it in our next meeting.
Right. Because right now, we have nothing that, and the Inn is a good neighbor, and we are grateful for the Inn, and they are accommodating. But if someone outside of the Inn in the town wished to do fireworks and they got approval from a health and safety perspective from the county and they wanted to do them at midnight, there is nothing that says that they cannot do it at midnight, as I understand it.
Great. Go ahead.
So that's, that's...
I have one question about this. I have a pet, and it can stay indoors for hours. In fact, it prefers that a lot of time. But I understand the Inn's problem that you have to sort of go with the flow and the moment's right, the moment's right, and that's when you have to do it for the people that have gone through a lot of effort to have the best event possible. So why couldn't the window be bigger and everybody keep their pets in and give the flexibility to the Inn to do it at the moment demanded?
I don't think there's any problem with that. Right now, we have an arrangement roughly with the Inn as to how they're going to proceed. But the scenario that I just offered to you is one that is not covered in any way. And it may never happen. I don't know. But the fact is that part of us is going on a good faith that Bob and Patrick are saying that likelihood is not going to continue much longer. The frequency is not going to continue much longer. And I think we have reason to believe them. But I don't know. It may be from the next fad is to do an event, you have fireworks, and all of a sudden you start getting a lot more. I don't know. And I'm not, and I'm willing to defer for a month or whatever that needs to be done. But I'm just saying that if it's not an ordinance, it is something that needs to have some guidelines. And I think the Inn has been very accommodating and worked with us to figure out some guidelines and somehow to implement those guidelines for the benefit of all of the citizens of the town that have just something that we can work from in the future. Heaven knows, the town and members of the town council, the Inn. At the beginning, Bob, we had some rough words, and we got through them, reached a good accommodation and worked things through as much as we could. I'd need to have to go through that a bunch of times with other entities or with any other entity as well. So I am happy to defer outside of, I think I've heard that as a general flavor from members of the town council. But I think we should probably determine that this is something that may come up in the future at some point. Is that a fair assessment, Maryann? Do you have any other final comments?
I just, I'd like to add again that the county administrator really strongly urged us to take some sort of step to, so that we could handle the concerns of the residents because that's, they don't handle that. They just do the fire safety. But the other issues that people complain about, the county feels that we should have some sort of a role in that.
I still feel that we should have some kind of guidelines.
We should have something. And I mean, if somebody comes to town and says, "I want to do fireworks in the town," and we say, "Well, you..." And they, what's, what's to, like you said, they can do it anytime, anytime during the day or night. I mean, there's, there's nothing there written. And it's not, I don't want it to sound like we're nitpicking this thing to death, but from the complaints that we've received from what the county is urging us to do, that we should at very least get some guidelines or something in writing and also to find out from the public how they feel about this. So I was hoping that we could have a public hearing tonight.
Well, let's do this. Let's, I guess, if I have anything else, I will make a motion to defer any discussion of an ordinance or anything like that to a future meeting. I would be happy to work with Maryann in putting up some rough guidelines that we could then bring up to the main meeting for discussion, not as an ordinance, but just as guidelines to adopt by the town for future fireworks. And then if that motion is approved, then we can go to the public forum and listen to comments from the public. So that is my motion.
I'll second.
Jean, second. Are there any additions or objections or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, wouldn't council wish to hear from everybody who has comments about before it tries to formulate any policy?
Yeah. I think what we're trying to do now is we're going to defer anything, make change to policy until after we've had guideline, after we've had the public forum. And the other thing that I'm, and the other thing is just to put together based upon what's happened now with the good conversations we've had with the Inn, is try to put some guidelines together that then can come up for review by the public at the May meeting. that then can come up for review by the public at the main meeting.
Let me just do the procedure there.
So.
As mayor, I would ultimately give the amount of work that we have to do between now and getting the budget done, and perhaps table this until July.
July?
The Fourth of?
Yes.
All right, we have amendment to defer this to July meeting. Most circumstances warrant earlier action. I'll accept that amendment to the motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't, Joe, what was your reason for that? I couldn't.
Give the amount of work that we have to complete to get the budget done between now and July, defer this to July. We're going to be here for quite a few hours to get through the major budget discussion, so. And I don't see the urgency of that. I'm asking that we defer, or July, we have, the council has sufficient time to.
All right, Jeanne has agreed to that. Okay. So voice vote, I presume? Mr. Bennett? Or roll call?
Roll call.
All right.
Say your passion.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And now, for all the patient people who are here, we open up to the public forum. Judy, disarmed.
Okay, I have two questions. One, I don't even understand this, or who even created it. I guess it means the mayor pastor would have to sign off on those applications. I wrote the fireworks. I think it's totally appropriate to put in some time limits, nine to ten. My only complaint has been that it gone off early and I missed them. I am one of the closest houses, I live in the Bradle, and I was following to the fireworks. And I love them. I assume there's a cost involved to the people who wish to have fireworks, and I just do not think, a huge number of people, they're going, hey, what it takes to put on fireworks. And that, I do think people have hours. And within that nine to ten, we know we keep ours. I also think we should have an ordinance on cats being outside. They are meant to earth and not outside. Finally.
Bravo.
Finally, I am curious as to when we will, well, you're doing open meetings, never mind. All right, that's it.
Okay. Sharon?
Sharon Proctor, and as a kid, and as my family, we were both from Iowa, just go see fireworks. Each town had different fireworks, there were different towns around the Fourth of July, and we'd go together. And we have the fireworks here. This is Rappahannock Town, there's not much to do in Rappahannock Town. And any time we could have a thrill, and woo-hoo! The fireworks going off, and the children are really happy. My cousin said that the town of Washington is the best town they've ever been in. We used to have a forest, the parrots down here, and the pond and everything. And it was always awesome. I'm always thrilled to see a firework. I mean, it's awesome. And I hate to say it, but when one of them doesn't go quite off right, and boom! It's a real thrill. And the winter shake, yes, I like that. But anyway, so I truly do like the fireworks. And to have them here as a county scene, and if they're going to put up a place where you can come and sit and enjoy the fireworks, and actually wear something that's great for evening, that's even a plus. But I am definitely for that. I just wanted to say that I really enjoy fireworks.
Thank you. So.
My name is Jay Brown, I'm a resident of the county. And with my husband, I own and operate a business here in town. I would just, during this public forum, say to the council that you stand at the edge of a slippery slope if you begin to regulate noise in the town. At least I understand that the only basis for considering regulating the display of fireworks from the town's perspective is the noise. There is another institution in town that a number of town members have gathered to complain about the noise from. I am not myself an owner of a pet, but several pet owners have expressed directly to me the concern that that institution is regularly frightening their pets with the noise it is making. And I suspect that the town will receive formal complaints from more than one person about the fact that that institution, to address the decibel's point that Mr. Qum raised earlier, has twice in recent months increased the volume of the noise it is making. The second time, in response to polite requests to that organization to decrease the first increase in volume. And in terms of frequency, that noise is made daily. On the hour, the quarter hour, the half hour, and the three-quarter hour, it forces businesses in close proximity to place on hold telephone calls because people on the other end of the phone cannot hear the person speaking while that noise is being made. And a number of people say their dogs are deeply frightened by the noise. I'm being completely serious.
I know. So we're talking about the chimes of the church?
I am talking about the recorded chimes and music broadcast by Trinity Episcopal Church. I am not myself, I am not myself this evening lodging a formal complaint about that. But I tell you that as a town council, if you once begin to regulate noise in any arena, you will find a flood rate of complaints about other sources of noise. And you should be sure you want to take all of that on before singling out any one source of noise. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to get a legal brief done. So, thank you, Jim.
I would just caution that you said there were five complaints. I don't know if it was the same five, the person, same person five times, or five different people, or whatever it was. But five people out of a hundred and thirty, thinking that lived in the town, like, count my husband and I, is two of them. You know, I don't know that I would go into a spin for that number.
Drew Mitchell, and I live right across the street right now from Patrick on Harris Hollow. Everybody in, excuse me. And I totally appreciate what Sharon has said about Rappahannock. I have a dog, dog hates any sort of loud, she's an older dog, so she hates the loud noises and all of that. However, sound travels, and sound has no concept of our town's limits. And so my dog, this, the other, just this past weekend, ran into the house several times during the day as people were doing target practice just up the hollow. To the, you know, the dog, there's a variety of sounds like that that happen all over the county, and especially when it's a little bit colder, clear day, the sound travels very far. So we can pass an ordinance here. However, the same scenario that you talked about, where somebody puts in a permit, and it's cleared by the county, and it's safe and everything, and they do it at midnight. Well, they could do that right across the street from two eleven, and the same people would be irritated. So I think my concern is, I'm uncomfortable with regulating such a small geographical area when fireworks happen countywide. So I would say, I mean, if you're going to do an ordinance, do a county-wide ordinance, which of course will never fly. So I think it's overly burdensome to have that ordinance here in the town. I think, you know, something less official, you know, you guys are very neighborly with the Inn. There's a four, well, actually now six-decade history at Avon Hall of shooting off fireworks on Fourth of July. And I'll tell you, on Fourth of July, there's no way you're going to get people that contain their fireworks within a half an hour period for four minutes. It's just not reasonable. And then, where are the repercussions? I don't know, I don't know, you know. If you can enforce a rule, then people are going to stop following it, and it just starts to unravel from there. So, yeah, and I, you know, so at some point, I plan on having very modest Fourth of July fireworks at Avon. I'd like to return that at some point in the future. And the same thing with Patrick. I mean, when I do it, I would want to make sure that I do respectfully to all the neighbors, a certain time period and all of that, and, you know. You may get ordinance, but then the reality is there's not a lot of places that are in, within our town limits that are going to hire a hire a technician. I mean, Brad's not going to do that in his backyard. I mean, he thinks they're really expensive. So, I mean, within the town limits, I mean, there's my property, there's the Inn's, and I'm not really sure who else we're really talking about. So, I mean, I'm giving you my word that I'm more than happy to be neighborly and comply with, you know, all of the handshakes that we're doing right now. You know, Brad, your point about how this town's growing up, I, it is, but it also isn't. Because when you actually look at the town, there's, it's a small town. There's a hundred and thirty people. There's only two significant properties within the town limits. And I would just take that into consideration as we're talking about creating more ordinances.
I appreciate that. Mr. Fats?
My turn? All right, let me talk about the process what we go through and a couple of points of clarification. I think some of the council members, and I know Barbara has seen, we hire, we don't hire the guests, we don't sell these fireworks, we make zero money off of them. We are in the business of making memories and dreams, as Patrick alluded to. That's really what we're doing. And it's very special, we do think, because of COVID, especially last year, everything was in shutdown, if you recall. Weddings were postponed during the shutdown. And they grabbed dates in June, and then they wanted to have fireworks and celebrate it. It was beautiful. So the process is, when they inquire about the fireworks, we introduce them through us and contractually with Ryan Francisco. His name is wonderful. The emails you've seen are as professional as they get. He has this fire ring out there, he has signs where you can't go into the blast zone. He has ATF license, he's very, very particular. And he's been very responsive in working with us, and I'm happy to continue working with you. Mary Ann had a very nice meeting and came up with some ideas. So from that process, he takes over. He, Community Casey Barber, there's an email blast. And, you know, we did agree on the timeframe, the length of show, the noise reduction. It's not an exact science, for sure, and we can streamline that. I have a couple of ideas. Some clarification of time, this past Saturday, the ten fifteen to, I think, ten forty-five or fifty window. We had a resident call and leave me a lengthy voicemail, saying that was too late. And then a request from the mayor to hopefully adhere to this ten o'clock time. Maybe I assumed, and I apologize, it would have been communicated, but it was not. So we tried to adhere to getting it done before ten. So that's the reason it went over. So we apologize for that. I mean, it's just another thing that we can work out. So having said that, I think making, perhaps, handshake rules or ordinances, or whatever you want to call it, could happen. We're very accommodating. But I would mention a couple of things. I have one idea of the time range. Is I can ask this Ryan to perhaps, you know how sometimes they do the one little shot? And then maybe within the next five minutes, you know what's going to start. So I think the big problem, what I'm hearing, is the surprise of it. Oh, suddenly, you know, even if it was an hour window, it doesn't matter what you do with your animals or babies or whatever, it's going to come at you. So I think that would be sufficient in many concerns to stop the surprise. And we're happy to do it. And I will say, if there's, you know, I don't know about getting some restriction into how many a year. I mean, I would think you'd address that if, you know, if we were doing two a weekend or something, I would be expecting you to come talk to me. But I think we could be reasonable. The only other thing I will mention with a four-minute timeframe, which is easily accomplished, and actually, four minutes or whatever, eight minutes to the guests, it's the same, they have their pictures, they have their photo ops, they have their memories. So four minutes is easy. I will say, there has to be some wording or some discussion of flexibility. If there was a Fourth of July, we'd proper notice to the town, and we invite everyone in chairs and optional beverages on chef's side of the road. Or perhaps a guest is a regular and comes to us quite often and wants to have a lengthy show, it would be communicated. But there has to be, I think that if it's rigid, we will run into problems and adversity. So if there's some type of flexibility and discussion, we're happy to do whatever is a win-win for everyone. My general feeling is, most of the people, if you took a roll vote on the town residents, it would pass in flying colors to keep the fireworks. So I think I understand the considerations. And the last point I'll make is, you know, and I understand everybody's reasoning to have a general rule for everyone. And we don't want to feel, the Inn doesn't want to feel any special treatment or exception or anything. But I do take exception personally, because of my feeling towards, again, when people, you know, the Inn versus the town type of thing, and the discussion of that, it's a little tough to swallow. I've heard comments recently about the fireworks that the Inn doesn't care about the residents. The Inn could care less about its neighbors. The big Inn is just making money. And I'll just point out that there is not one single charity in the county or town that the Inn doesn't, within twenty-four hours, immediately grant food for the church, food business, we have to have it. So we care about the town quite a bit, we care about the neighbors. The Inn's part of the party, it would be more of those. I mean, there's, we care, we are the town, part of the town. So it's not any, there's zero meetings ever that take place that say, we're going to do this, and who cares about that kind of thing. So I just wanted to make that point, that we got to consider it.
And we appreciate the Inn being good neighbors. And we hope we're good neighbors for the Inn as well. So thank you. In fact, I don't like to say it as me and they, it's, we're all in this together. No, we're all part of the town.
Well, I'd like to make something about the explosive in the noise. So the last two shows of 2020, it was requested to try to reduce the noise. All the shows prior to that used three-inch mortars. And I'm happy to connect to Ryan, he's been testing. Three-inch mortars were the boom. We requested to go, he started doing less than one inch. This last show, he could only get one inch. So it's still reduced from the three-inch to one, but it definitely was louder than the final two adjustments. So he's trying, and with the COVID supply chain, he couldn't get it. And I was unaware that it was a little louder than the last two, but.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Nancy, I hate what you just said, that you got complaints. How long have you been here now?
Personally?
No.
The Inn, we're in our forty-third year.
Forty-third year.
And I would guess, except for yourself, longer than anyone else in the room. You got me beat, Nancy. I knew your father. Oh, sure, sure, I'm sorry.
But, you know, you can no longer separate the town from the Inn. We got the sewer system for the Inn, and we accepted that. And we're, the rest of us are responsible for that. You know, the fact that a hundred and thirty-three people are half what was at the time the state of the art sewer system, you know. Thank God. Our neighbors used to have leaches in their backyard and slimy water. But we're all, we are in this team. And I never thought I'd say it, but, you know, this little bitty group of people supporting this sewer system, we've got to pay for it. We're all part of a whole. But the thing of complaints, that the Inn doesn't care. The Inn has been doing stuff for the town for as long as I can remember. And there are struggles to. And their struggles to get accepted here, my God, what a miserable process that was. And now we're just a part of each other. So I'm sorry if somebody still would say this.
They're right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy. I dare anybody to top that, so I will go ahead and close the...
According to John, you need to read the four emails and the record.
This wasn't a formal public hearing, so if you didn't go that route, then... I would prefer not to go that route. They are, I will make note that they are in the materials that were received by the public. But I feel comfortable, especially with some of the language that was used, that I'm not at all comfortable going verbatim or even close to some of the things that are... So we are at the point where we are adjourned, with our next meeting to be May 10, 2021, 2020, I see on the clock. So a motion to adjourn? Joe, any second? Patrick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?